David, Dave? Gary Sharpe?
Good evening, everyone. We're going to get the public hearing underway. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. There is an agenda in front of council and looking for a motion to adopt the agenda, moved by Council Chappell, seconded by Council Prior. All those in favor, opposed if any, motion carries. First up, we have public hearings for District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 2500-2017 and District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw 2200-2011, both for the Chikai River Development. At the beginning of each public hearing, I have to read this statement as this is a legislated process, so bear with me. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Part 14, Division 3 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to council respecting matters contained in the proposed District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 2500-2017, Amendment Bylaw Chikai River Development Number 2615-2018, and District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Number 2200-2011, Amendment Bylaw Chikai River Development CD-82, Number 2306-2013. Everyone present shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, it is important that remarks be restricted to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Members of council may ask questions following presentations, however, the function of council at a public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review and comment and have been included as part of the Planning Department report, or if received later, handed out at the meeting and included in the public hearing package. If any documents are submitted during the hearing, please feel free to review the document during the hearing by asking staff. Members of the public shall maintain order and quiet and shall not applaud or interrupt any speech or actions of members of council or another person addressing council. I'll now call on the Planning Department to introduce the bylaws.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jonas Valenischis. I am the Director of Community Planning. With me today here are the Acting General Manager of Community Planning and Infrastructure, Chris Wickham, Manager of Municipal Infrastructure, David Rolston, and Director of Major Project, Dave Nero. So today, I will walk you through the staff report that's on the agenda for the public hearing. The location of the site is in northern Brackendale. It is located adjacent to schools and within district service areas. The site is essentially around the Ross Road neighborhood. And here's just current conditions on the map, so showing the proposed 50-acre park, the Brackendale Farmers Institute, which would be a dedication to the district, the existing development, which is contained of two schools and a church, as well as some housing that exists along Ross Road, as well as housing along Depot Road. It shows a disturbed area from previous development. This was a previously planned subdivision by the province a few decades ago. Existing woodlot was previously there, however, the applicants have recently bought the woodlot out, so the woodlot is no longer as part of the site. And lastly, the Squamish Nation has acquired large portions of this site from the province in the last year since the last public hearing.
Could we turn up the sound volume a bit, Quayz?
How is that? Is that better?
That is better.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So just to walk over the history of this application, the application was submitted in 2013. The initial application was for 750 single-family lots. In January of 2015, the application was introduced to council, and in March of that same year, the first reading was given to the OCP amendment. Between 2014 and 2016, the applicants held five public information meetings. Subsequently, in February of 2016, the OCP amendment got second reading and the zoning amendment received first reading. On April 26th in 2016, council received a report on alternative mitigation assessment for the Chikai Fan, looking at all of the options for mitigating the hazard. In October of 2016, a review of proposed CACs and mitigation approach was brought to Committee of the Hall, and in October, the Inspector of Dykes presentation happened at the council chambers at a council meeting. The zoning amendment received second reading in November of 2016, at which point both the OCP bylaw and the zoning bylaw were scheduled for a public hearing. So the first public hearing happened in January of 2017. After the public hearing, the district received some new information which pertained to the cooperation accord between the Squamish Nation and the district, and so a second public hearing is required. However, between January of 2017 and today, there were a number of committee meetings, as well as a council meeting, further diving into the cost of operations and maintenance, as well as the revised CAC. And finally, in June, a new OCP bylaw was given first and second reading because the district adopted a new official community plan, so the bylaw that was trying to amend the official community plan had to be renewed. And then on today, we're holding a second public hearing, so it's been four and a half years since the start of the application. This is a land use map of proposed changes to the current OCP, so there are essentially four changes happening in terms of land use designations. There's a redesignation from civic institutional to residential neighborhoods, redesignation from restricted industrial to residential neighborhoods, redesignation from residential neighborhoods to parks and green corridors and recreation, which is essentially the part of the Brackendale Farmers Institute site. And finally, redesignation from parks, greenways, corridors, and recreation to residential neighborhood, which is identified here along Ross Road. In terms of rezoning area, so the residential component would be comprised of about 48 hectares. The strata-owned parks and trails would be about five hectares. The Ray Peter Trails is close to four hectares. The Brackendale Farmers Institute Park would be about 20 hectares. And also, the rezoning is proposing to rezone the cemetery expansion area, which is just north of the development site, but because this, we're changing zoning in this area, we're proposing to change the zoning here to allow for future expansion as well. So here's the picture of current zoning. We've got RS1, which is single-family zoning in this area, which also covers a large portion of the park. We've got RS2 down by Depot Road, which is proposed to be rezoned to a park use. And then we've got Resource on the northern sections of the site, and we've got a school and church institutional-type zoning, covering existing uses. The proposed zoning would entail rezoning the proposed expansion of the cemetery to a P2 zone, which is our institutional zone, rezoning from RS1 and the Resource Zone to CD-82, which is a zone that is specific to this development, as well as rezoning from RS1 and RS2 Zone to P3, which is our park zone for the Brackendale Farmers Institute Park, as well as the connections to Ross Road. In terms of proposed land uses, here's an image representing the zoning designations. So we've got single-detached and medium-sized lots, as well as a tiny home provision on parcel D. Parcel B up at the north side is also single-detached, medium-sized lots. Parcel C is multifamily, and so is parcel E and parcel F. Parcel E also contains a neighborhood commercial node that is proposed. Parcel G is a park, and parcel A is a single-detached, small and medium-sized lots. So overall, in terms of residential units, there are 537 single-dwelling units and 678 multiple-dwelling units, so that would be apartments and townhouses. Here's the overall plan, showing the internal road network, the trail network, as well as the proposed park spaces, as well as the neighborhood commercial node. This is just another image showing the trail connections. So the idea behind the single-family development, as well as the multifamily development, is that every lot or every parcel back onto a green space. So there should be double frontage, both on the roadside, as well as the trail side. All of the strata parks and strata trails would have a public access right-of-way, so it would be fully accessible to the public. This is just a show of trail right-of-ways, so the widths of the right-of-way matter for buffering purposes, how much buffering is there between the actual paved surface and adjacent properties. So Ray Peters Trail varies between 20 meters in length, sorry, in width, and 10 meters. And then the strata trails vary anywhere between 10 meters and 5 meters. There's a sidewalk proposed along the full length of Ross Road, which would connect it from Government Road down to Depot. In terms of project features, a transit hub is proposed in the neighborhood commercial zone, as well as electric charging stations for the commercial stalls. The development proposes to use green development standards for things like stormwater management and energy efficiency. Of course, the BC Energy Step Code will apply to this development. In terms of active transportation, the internal strata roads are proposed to use advisory lane principles, which is where you've got a vehicle lane running down the middle, and both sides of the road are used for active transportation purposes. So that would only apply to the internal strata roads. As I mentioned, there's a sidewalk proposed along the full section of Ross Road, as well as a sidewalk on the internal strata roads, the main roads that run north to south and east to west. In terms of parks and trails, the VFI Park is proposed to be transferred from Crown to the district. The Ray Peters Trail would be dedicated to the district as a linear park as well, and, as I mentioned, public access to all of the parks and trails. So since the first reading to the zoning bylaw and the OCP, there have been a number of revisions. There are new housing types proposed. Previously, it was single-family. Now, it's more multifamily development than single-family. There are new commercial uses. Previously, there was no commercial use. Now, the rezoning would secure a minimum amount of commercial space. There's an increase in density from 750 units to 1215. School added as a permitted use. There are two public land areas, so previously, the rezoning center around the development, now it encompasses the whole area, and agriculture was added as a permitted use to the park site. In terms of other changes that are not captured in the zoning bylaw, would be captured in the land development agreement, is the new type of housing tenure. We've got in total 170 purpose-built rental units proposed, so half of those would be non-market, privately-owned, non-market units, which would meet the district's affordable housing definition, and half of it would be just market rental, purpose-built, in perpetuity. There's also a commitment to add a daycare space, a minimum of 5,000 square feet within the multifamily area, so the zoning allows for childcare as a standalone use or as a residential use in the residential areas. So this is a commitment to add the purpose-built standalone use to the neighborhood commercial area. It generally meets the provisions of the district's official community plan in that it mitigates the high hazard that currently exists on the Chikai Fan. It enhances linkages with the trail network and corridors, provides for a range of housing types and tenures, and affordability. It has appropriate transitions with adjacent land uses. It incorporates walking distances to commercial, institutional, and parks, and it's an overall complete proposal for a complete community with the neighborhood commercial addition. In terms of community amenity contributions, so because the application was submitted back in 2013, the interim guidelines are applied to the calculation of the target. So if we take the single-family units and the multifamily units and discount the existing zoning that already allows for about 180 single-family lots in the area, we get to a CAC target of about 7.4 million. If we compare that to where the district's CAC policy is heading today, our targets are still in draft, but it looks like they will be increasing from 10,000 to 20,000 for single-family development, plus 3,000 for greenfield development for those single-family lots. And then the per-square-foot for multifamily is going up from $6 a square foot to 15. So if we incorporate those changes, the target for this development would be more in the range of $20,000, or sorry, $20 million. This is a proposed community amenity contribution from the applicant, so as always with these applications, the applicant makes a proposal, we present it, and then we also outline which aspects of the proposal qualify as a CAC under this district's policy and guidelines. So as proposed from the applicant, the debris hazard mitigation barrier, because it potentially addresses the existing hazard on the Chikai Fan, has been included at the value of 45 million. The value is conceptual because the detailed design hasn't been done yet. The park dedication is valued at 1.7 million, which relates to assessment, close to the assessed value back in the 2013-2014 era. The park value has gone up since, according to BC assessment. The Ray Peters Trail dedication, so the Ray Peters Trail will be part of the 5% dedication that every subdivision has to do statutorily. However, the dedication requirements exceed the 5%, and so that excess land dedication is valued at about 660,000. There's a cash contribution proposed of 1.5 million to a general amenity fund. There are additional park improvements that are proposed within the parks, which include playgrounds, pump track, and rock bouldering, so these would be publicly accessible parks, not the land value, just the improvement value. Ray Peters Trail upgrades, Ray Peters Trail will need upgrading and extension within the district property, so that's valued at 120,000. The excess sidewalk on Ross Roads of this development was just doing frontage improvements in front of the development. This would not be included in the 65,000. Affordable housing is calculated at 18 million, and that's simply a calculation of construction costs, so what it would cost, notwithstanding the land cost, but what it would cost to build 85 units of non-market rental housing, and that is essentially a $260 per square foot. The daycare space is added as an amenity. Again, the applicant has agreed to dedicate 5,000 square feet for a purpose-built daycare. It hasn't been attached any value to it, as well as the central transit node, the car share commitment, and the electric charging stations, which would be all above bylaw requirements. And so the total amenity contribution, not including the last two items, is about 67 million. In terms of the components of the CAC that are eligible under the district's policy and practices, the transfer from Crown of the district park is directly tied to this development, so it is, we accept the value of 1.7 million. Ray Peters Trail upgrades, as well as community amenity cash contribution, essentially all of the components except for the barrier proposal, our cap, would fit under our CAC policy. On the right side is a timeline for some of these amenities, so you'll notice that affordable housing is proposed to be phased in along with the 300th unit of residential development. So the overall density is 1,215 units, and by the time the developer constructs 300 units, they would have to bring online the affordable housing component. The market rental housing component would come in at 500 units, as currently proposed. The daycare space is tied to the neighborhood commercial establishment, and that is being proposed at 400 residential units, so about a third through the development, as well as the central transit node, car share, and electric charging stations are proposed at the same time as the neighborhood commercial, which is at about 400 residential units. Now, we are securing a certain minimum amount of commercial space, which is 13,000 square feet, but the applicant has advised that their planning to build is about 45,000 square feet, because there is room for that in this area, and there may be demand for it. A number of environmental reports have been done on this application dating back to 2007. We have confirmation that there is an absence of riparian areas in this proposed area. The 2007 report recommended a number of specific species surveys to be undertaken when each parcel is being developed, and so those recommendations would be captured in the land development agreement and will be registered on title. The mitigation barrier, if that is the proposed mitigation, would have to go through its own environmental impact assessment, and I should note that the district has recently adopted the new official community plan, which has increased standards for environmental protection, and so a lot of this site would fall within this development permit area for environmental protection, which doesn't, not only includes the riparian protection, but also terrestrial. So we would be looking at wildlife, habitat, significant trees, and as well as buffer areas and corridors. But that would be determined at development permit stage. So in terms of hazard mitigation, development lands are fully within the debris flow area, and according to official community plan, it needs a mitigation plan prior to development. The hazard mitigation proposes to address existing hazard to existing development. On the right side, we have some of the main steps that have been focused on the hazard point throughout this application between 2013 and 2016, when the district looked at all of the alternatives, and it was determined that the upper canyon debris barrier, which is the large debris, would probably be the most optimal option. In terms of existing risk exposure, BGC Engineering did a study in 2015, which concluded that the exposure in the Brackendale area ranges between 19 and 892 million, depending on the event, so it took a range anywhere between 1 in 20 to 1 in 10,000-year event. So based on that, and based on the expert panel review, the second expert panel review, the risk that currently exists on the Chikai Fan is unacceptable in terms of risk tolerance levels. There is some rationale for cost-sharing, the operations and maintenance regime that is associated with the mitigation option for the debris flow barrier. There is the existing need to address mitigation, whether this development proceeds or not, because the mitigation would likely reduce the level of hazard, and it appears that the cost associated with operations, maintenance, and reserve building may be too significant on a single development, and the benefits of that protection may be too wide for this development to solely carry the cost of construction, as well as the maintenance of the debris flow barrier. In terms of structure and ownership of the proposed mitigation, so the development would carry all of the costs associated with the debris flow barrier. The structure would be located at the very top of the fan. The area of the structure is currently outside of the district, or sorry, it's on Crown land, and as I mentioned previously, the conceptual estimate is 45 million, but that's not going to be determined until a detailed design is done. District of Squamish, according to the province, would likely be the only entity that could be the owner and operator of this facility. So the responsibilities for maintenance would include monitoring and maintaining the barrier on a regular basis, cleaning out smaller debris flow events, and rehabilitating the structure after larger events, as well as managing the funding associated with this long-term operations and maintenance. The funding area could be created for this development through a local area service, which is essentially a local area tax that only applies to the development, and theoretically, that area could be expanded if, let's say, the protection allows for more development on the Chikai Fan, and there are other developments coming online, that local service area could be expanded. Emergency Management BC has advised us that there may be funding available to deal with the larger events if it reduces the capacity of the debris mitigation system to, again, an unacceptable threshold, as long as the district maintains the system in good order. However, we are still pursuing the answer from the province, whether EMBC funding would be available. So the table here shows the breakdown, again, this is conceptual, of the operations and maintenance costs, which is approximately 919,000 annually, so that would include building a reserve for a large event. That would include insurance in case of a large event happened. That would include annual maintenance, so plowing snow on the road, maintaining the berm, grading the road, the access road, as well as debris cleanout. And debris cleanout at 188,000, that is really to make sure that the reserve is getting built and is not being touched, and it's based on annual probability of events. So some years, the debris cleanout portion would not be spent, and some years, it would be spent, so it's essentially that portion protects the reserve from those larger events. We looked at two different scenarios. One with provincial funding, which would fund the reserve building portion of it, 80 to 20, so 80% of it would be on the province, 20% of it would be on the district. And so there's two scenarios here. With provincial funding, the overall operations, maintenance, and reserve building costs go down to 534,000 annually, and again, so that's reduction by about 40%, and without it, it's 919,000. And then in the report, there are four tables. Each two of the tables show the different impact on taxation based on three different options, with and without the provincial funding. So the first two tables break it down without the provincial funding, and so we've got, this is a table that shows what impact it would have on residential properties. So the first line in the table is 100% of the reserve portion, which is the 480,000 being on the general taxation, and then 100% of the operations and maintenance, the remainder of that would be on the local service area, which is this development. So the breakdown is essentially 52% of the overall cost to the district, 48% of the overall cost to the local area. And without the provincial funding, the tax increase on residential properties would be about 1.9%. If we take a second option, and we look at 100% of the reserve being attributed to the district, and then we split the operations and maintenance costs between the district and the local service area, the split becomes 76% on the district and 24% on the local service area, and as a result, the taxes, impact on taxation would go up by 2.7%. And then thirdly, we looked at an option where all of the operations, maintenance, and reserve costs are carried by the district. and reserve costs are carried by the district at 100%, and then the taxation impact on residential properties is about 3.5%. We looked at other business classes as well, not just residential. So you can see here that in scenario one, where we are basically splitting 52 and 48% between district and local service area, the 1.9% increase would result in 109 on industry, 130 on businesses, 59 on managed forest lands, 14 on recreation, and $1 on farm properties. And so we looked at the same examples, 100% on reserve, 50/50 on the taxation and local service area for O&amp;M, and so the numbers go up. And same thing if we look at option three, where we look at all costs on the district at 100%, the numbers go up as well. And here's the funding options with provincial funding available. So if the province came in and funded the cleanup of these larger events, the impact is reduced. Under the option for residential properties, the tax increase is 0.4%. And so, sorry, I think I've mixed up the table headings here. This is non-residential, and this is residential. So it's 0.4%, 1.2% if we go 59% and 41% between the district and the local service area, and then 2.1% if it's 100% on the district. And the same analysis is provided for the non-residential classes. And so we can see the impact is greater on some of the business classes than it is on If there are any questions on this portion, we can perhaps come back after the presentation.
I'm sure there will be.
So in terms of options for cost sharing, option one, which is district funds the reserve, the local service area funds the operations and maintenance. There is rationale for this approach. Funding a significant portion of the reserve by the district would be strategic from a wider hazard management perspective. We already have a need established for a hazard-type reserve, so this could be the start of it. The risk of depleting this reserve entirely for another purpose is something that needs to be mitigated, and so a contribution from the local service area into the reserve, even if it was a small one, would make sure that this reserve or a portion of it is reserved for the response to debris flow events on the Chikai Fan. The second option, which is the district funds the reserve and half of the operations and maintenance costs, again, the impact on taxation is greater. However, there is also recognition that this proposed debris structure would protect existing development on the Chikai Fan, and because the impact on the new area is lesser, it could be a more sustainable approach. And finally, the third option, which is district-funded operations, maintenance, and reserve, also has rationale. It reduces administrative burden to the district, because the district wouldn't have to set up and operate a local service area. It's an equitable approach to taxation, given that the new development would carry the cost of designing and establishing the mitigation, the district would carry the cost of operations and maintenance. And it treats the hazard in the same way that we treat other hazards, such as flood protection. It represents, however, the worst-case scenario in terms of taxation at 3.5% tax increase. And that's without provincial funding. With provincial funding, that shifts down to 2.1%. So there's options, there's rationale for all of the options. In staff's opinion, options one or two provide a fair approach to the operations, maintenance, and also addresses the need for reserve building for other hazards. That is it for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just quickly go to counsel for any question for clarification purposes. Counsel Raisin.
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide for community amenity contributions provided by the developer? Their evaluation?
Yes.
Right. So it's the affordable housing, non-market purpose-built rental housing, 85 units valued at $18 million. Is the title to those units coming to the district, or will it stay with the developer?
No, it would be similar to waterfront landing proposal, where it's privately owned, so it would be owned by one entity, all of the units. However, district would have a housing agreement registered on a property that would secure all of those units in perpetuity as affordable housing units.
Can you tell me how the 18 million is arrived at?
Yes. So it's based on construction costs for those 85 units. So that doesn't include the land. It's essentially looking at $270 per square foot of construction cost. The other way of looking at it would be to see, to look at what impact it has on revenue. So because it will be privately owned, if we take a 50-year period, which is kind of a minimum lifespan of a building, and we look at the revenue loss for the owner, it actually, it's a similar amount. Over 50-year period, it's about 16 million in revenue loss, if you take 80% of the market rate. So our policy normally secures it. It ties to income, and it has a provision that no matter what, it can't, the rates cannot exceed 80% of the market rate. So if we look at that 80%, the 20% loss represents over 50-year period, about 16 million.
Thank you.
Counsel Chappell.
Thank you. The debris flow, the hazard mitigation barrier, 45 million, is the design and construction capped at 45 million? If it goes over, are they expected to complete the barrier regardless of cost?
Yes.
Is it possible to speak out so we can hear it?
Yep. Gary, can we make sure it's loud?
I can just repeat the question. A question was made around the cost of the debris flow barrier, and whether the cost would be capped at 45 million, and what happens if the cost goes over that amount. So the developer would be responsible for all of the construction costs, no matter the cost. At this point, it's conceptual. A significant amount of resources has to be spent to get to the design, the detailed design, and at which point, that number is probably going to change.
Thank you.
Counsel Pryor.
Thank you. Just to further Counselor Raisin's point on the affordable housing, can you just describe to everybody how that 80% of a market rental works, and how are you going to track that over 50 years?
So if we take, if we assume a market rate for rental, so let's assume the rate of 1,600 a month average, and then we take the number of units, and we multiply it by the number of years, and then we take 20% of that amount. That's how we arrive.
So let's just say there's a glut on the market, and rents go down. Do the rents on those ones go down as well?
They would, because what the housing agreement would establish is kind of the maximum rates. But in order to stay competitive, if there is a glut on the market and the rates go down, then yes, the rents, I would assume, would have to go down in order for this development to stay competitive.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting, you know, to hear you say the 50-year window on these. That's the first time I've heard that, and so I've had a hard time kind of getting my head around the affordable housing. So if you, basically, you're giving the guy his rent reduction over 50 years is part of the amenity.
50 years is just for calculation purposes. The housing agreement would secure the units in perpetuity, so it would go beyond 50 years till the end of the building, and then when, at the end of the building, the building would need to be redeveloped, then the district would have a say of what happens at that point as well.
So we got a letter from Rachel Shepherd, really a good letter. Are you going to address some of those things on there? Like, will we have a chance for some of these letters to be addressed, or do you want me to ask the questions, or?
We can ask staff to address the questions on the letter. Yes, Counsel Pryor.
Okay. And so then the final thing for me is, I saw in the report, there was going to be some studies done on wildlife and habitat and all that?
Yes, that's the recommendation from the 2007 report that...
So as far as habitat corridors, the jury's still out on those until that work's done?
It is. It's also, there's also an incorporation of protection of corridors in our development permit area guidelines as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I saw some of the trails were 30 feet, or 8 meters, or whatever it was, 10 meters, so that's pretty good.
That said, it may be worth mentioning in our conversations last week about the potential dog park up in that area. This conservation officers clearly articulated the wildlife challenges in that area.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I wanted to go back to the Kerwood-Lydell report from 2016, where we looked at alternative mitigation options. And in that report, the debris flow structure high up in the fan was preferred because of the cost, was the capital cost was covered by the development, as well as the O&amp;M costs, operations and maintenance. And then there was the mid-fan berm, which is the other sort of second choice, which had lower capital costs and lower operation and maintenance costs. So all these different, I think there were seven different choices we had went through criteria, social, environmental, financial. Given that we're now looking at cost sharing on the reserve and operations and maintenance, have we gone back and put this option through those criteria again to look at whether this is the preferred option?
David, is that a question for you?
Sure.
Yes. So we evaluated the mitigation alternatives based on the best information we had at the time, which, as you noted, was based on an assumption of 100% of the capital costs and 100% of the operating and maintenance costs being taken on by the developer.
Can everyone hear?
No.
Speak, yeah, just a little closer to David. Thank you.
So we haven't gone back and reassessed those mitigation options based on this assumption of operations and maintenance. That has not been done to date.
Can I follow?
Yep.
The other thing from that report, and this is a question about the money being set aside for reserves, not just operations and maintenance, but they said, because both existing and new development would remain in place in perpetuity, the district may wish to incorporate structural design life and any potential costs for decommissioning and replacement into its decision framework. So does that reserve calculate an end of life for this structure, or just having a reserve to dig it out if we have a major event?
Through the mayor, these, the cost estimates that have been prepared so far, Jonas, maybe you could go back to that table, they take into account maintenance costs. They're very conceptual and high-level. By the time we complete a detailed design, we'll know what elements of the mitigation structure are concrete and steel and have finite design lives. Most of the berm would be gravel and essentially has an infinite life from a design perspective. So once we know what elements need to be replaced at end of life, we would incorporate that into the cost estimate. So we are building an adequate reserve that we can replace those elements at the end of their design life.
Counsel Kent.
Oh, thank you. In the phases of the build-out of the residential pieces, at what point in those phases would we see those rental units come online?
Through you, mayor. So the affordable housing units would come in at the point where the development reaches 300 units in construction, and the non-market, or sorry, the market rental units, the other 85, would come in at the point of 500 units coming on to the market.
And so do we know what phase of development that might be? Phase one, phase two?
It will probably be associated, the single-family portion of this development will likely be the first. However, we don't yet have the detailed information on how exactly the phasing would happen.
And if I may, one other?
Go ahead.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but did we not hear from the province at one point that irregardless of whether this development gets built or not, that there was some mitigation required to be built to protect Brackendale, et cetera, from the fan?
That was the conclusion of the expert panel, the second expert panel, that because of the existing risk exposure, regardless of development, some sort of mitigation, whether it's mitigation or retreat, would be necessary, because the level of risk is too high.
Thank you.
Counsel Raisin.
Well, that was almost exactly my question, and I was just going to ask you to comment on what the extent of the risk is to existing development, if you can give just a rough idea. I don't know if you have a slide of it, but maybe just a rough verbal description of the geographic area that is threatened by the risk at this time.
Perhaps David can speak to that. So there has been an extensive amount of debris flow hazard mapping that's been prepared through this development to date, and the entire Chikai Fan landmass, so basically heading from the apex of the Chikai Fan down to the Chekamis, the confluence with the Chekamis River, and then south all the way to the Mamquam River dike, is all within an area that could be impacted by a debris flow with a very extreme return period probability, so 1 in 10,000-year return period, very remote possibility. And there's some very conservative assumptions that are built into that mapping, like that the debris flow would actually block the Chikai River and redirect it down towards the Squamish River floodplain. So, you know, it's a very extreme and remote possibility, but in that worst-case scenario, it could impact Garibaldi Estates, all of Brackendale. It's a very wide-ranging area.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the proposed structure is meant to, meant to plan it for a 10, 1 in 10,000-year event? Or 1 in something else?
The structure would be designed based on a quantitative risk assessment, so looking at getting the risk to loss of life within publicly tolerable levels. And there's the table that you'd be familiar with from expert panel number two. It looks at the probability of loss of life. Essentially, they would build a structure large enough that brings that risk down to within the as low as reasonably practicable area of that risk-to-loss-of-life table. So it wouldn't be a hazard-based design, it would be a risk-based design.
But from a purely physical point of view, what volume of debris flow would be mitigated through this structure?
At this stage, I think it's been proposed that the structure would hold about 2.8 million cubic meters of debris, but that does need to be refined through the design process.
And that's a 1 in what year return?
That's approximately a 1 in 2,500-year return period, a little bit more.
That's what I was trying to get you to say. Thanks. Counsel Chappell.
Thanks. This is, and Liza, thank you. This may be an odd question, and I don't think it's been addressed, but I was looking at other mitigation strategies that are being done in Nepal with large Louisville Fan in the same sort of area, and they were draining lakes. They were, instead of having one large debris flow hazard coming down as our barrier presents, they were looking at draining lakes and having a slower drainage instead of having one persistent event. Have we looked at any other strategy except for debris flow barrier mitigation for once a debris flow hazard comes down, such as slower drainage of the lake?
Which lake are you talking about?
Garibaldi Lake at the top there.
This is not mitigating Garibaldi at all.
The debris flow hazard coming down, but water mitigation for the debris flow.
Maybe clarify where the debris barrier is...
From the top of the Chikai River, having water diversion... Like from the top of the Chikai River, having water diversions, so that we're not, it's all coming down one area?
I think it's possible that we are confusing the barrier hazard at Garibaldi Lake.
That's right. I am confusing the area.
Further north, which is actually, I call it a misconception.
I did a flyover looking at the lake.
So there's the barrier near Garibaldi Lake, where if that released, a lot of water would come down much further north from town. This barrier, the mitigation barrier that we would be building, is not the barrier.
It's just for the debris flow in the Chikai.
This is to essentially mitigate in a very large, chaussé, to use the rock-climbing term, area of volcanic rock that feeds into the...
The alluvial fan.
Top of the Chikai River watershed. So there's not really a water to drain out at that point.
Excellent. Thanks, I thought it was an odd question. I was looking at other debris flow hazards.
At this point, I'm sure there's lots more questions from counsel, but we will go to the public now. I have about five names on my list. If you do want to speak at the public hearing, please, if you can, put your name out with Terry, Terry Wave. And then once we get through our list, if people still want to speak, just put your hand up and I'll recognize you. First up, we have Chief Dale Harry, and on deck, we have Eric Anderson.
Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization. And don't touch the mic.
Checkman Hart, Tensai, Bakal Tensiam, Koi Shamin Snaw. Dale Harry is my English name. And Chief Dale Harry, one of the hereditary chiefs for the Squamish and a member of this community. I reside at 37648 Chief Harry Drive. So anyways, I just wanted to, and one of the things I wanted to share is, you know, just looking at the historical stream of events here, and you mentioned 2013. This goes back farther than 2013. This goes back 15 years ago. I've been working on this project, on this thing with the Chikai for 15 years. I went through how many mayors? Corrine, Ian, Rob, oh, Greg too as well, I shouldn't forget Greg. And then now with Patty, right? So, you know, and mayors come, mayors go, council comes, council goes. But I'll tell you this, our membership and our community are here forever, you know, and we're not going anywhere. You know, I'll tell you this, back in our day, in my mother's time, when she was in chief and council, there was 1,000 people on our membership list. Now there's well over 4,000 people. Now, you know, that shows that we're not going anywhere. We're just going up, and there's going to be places and our people moving from down in North Vancouver, we're running out of space down there, and they're going to come up here in Squamish and to our property. So, you know, one of the things is that, looking at the, I do support this Chikai Fan developments, and there's very big reasons for it, because it provides the safety for our people and our villages in Wewukum, maybe our new villages sites in Pokiosum, Skamane, and Chiakamas. And Chiakamas is one of the villages that is just staring down a gun barrel. If our debris flow comes up there and it comes down, where's it going to hit? It's going to hit our village. And our people and their elders and community didn't want to stay there. They wanted to stay up further. It was the government that went and put them there. So, you know, one of the things dealing with this, dealing, I've seen one of the readings on their Kerwood-Lydell, but what was ignored on that Chikai Fan debris hazard study was over 100 years of experience on there. We had professors. One was chosen by the District Squamish, the Squamish Nation, and also the province. So, you know, one of the things that we see as a member of this community, as one of the hereditary chiefs of this nation, my father was born in Chiakamas, you know, and certainly there's, all my family's from up that area. So, you know, I really support this project, you know, for the safety of our children and our children's children. And I'll tell you this, I've been on it for 15 years, and there is a Chikai Fan debris hazard study that says that you need to go up and provide some protection, not for only my village and for my people, but also for the district of Squamish and the community. So, you know, I just wanted to share those few words, and I just wanted to share that it was 15 years. While Squamish is blossoming, you see development everywhere. Our elders see it there, they've seen it all developing. And yet, the Squamish Nation seems to be part of this process, and they, in their eyes, it feels like we're being pushed aside, you know? And it's taken, taken a long time. And I just wanted to share those few words, and I want our district council, I'm one of your voters, so I'll vote for whoever goes up there and supports this project, OCP.
Thank you, Chief Harry. Next up is Eric Anderson, and on deck is Ben Hawkins.
Thank you, Mayor Heintzmann. Eric Anderson, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Squamish and District Forestry Association. And I should just introduce that the forest industry has...
Did you just say your address, Eric, please? Thank you. Your address?
Address 3316 Vista Crescent.
Thank you.
The forest industry has been a stakeholder, is a stakeholder in Chikai Fan land use planning for a long time. As part of formal plans since the late 1990s, the last OCP, several references to our role there, and more recently, as part of a memorandum of understanding between our association and the district, March 2017, towards a forest industry land use strategy, the focus of which is essentially the Chikai Fan and our future place there. For log handling, primary processing activities with the emphasis on primary. I will mostly be commenting on the funding options for the Debris Hazard Mitigation System, or Birm. One of the options to fund the Hazard Mitigation Service, and I'm reading from today's presentation, is through the creation of a local area service tax, specific to hazard mitigation on the Chikai Fan, a user-pay system. The other option that's been presented is quoting "strategically applying a broader taxation approach and accumulating reserves for more general, all-natural hazard reserve purposes to provide more flexibility for the community by addressing and funding a broader range of natural hazard event recovery in the future, district-wide." So the establishment of an all-hazard reserve has been a recommendation of the district's long-term financial plan, guiding principles, and financial policy. Staff go on to comment that because the local area service tax funding is restricted only to the Chikai debris structure by legislation, but if the reserve were funded through general taxation, then these funds could be used for hazard mitigation more generally across the district rather than solely for the Chikai structure. So these are the two options you are faced with here. We would like to express support for this latter approach of the general taxation approach and its application to a Chikai Fan hazard mitigation system. We note that council will not be making a decision on this issue this evening or at this time, and staff comments that it will receive ongoing evaluation. But at this time, we would like to express just the comment that the general taxation approach has a lot of sense and merit, and we would like to express some caution with respect to the local area service tax approach. There has been no consultation with the forest industry, or the airport leaseholders, or carbon engineering for that matter, regarding their views on a local area, service area taxation approach. We suggest that that should be the case, that there should be robust engagement process with other Chikai Fan land use development and other stakeholders before such an approach were adopted. And we wish to be on record with this recommendation for robust consultation before you implement a local area service tax. As an illustration of the merits of the alternative approach, we'd like to point to the Mamquam Blind Channel, the mouth of the Squamish River, and Site B area, where we, as you may know, are currently facing some debris hazard, if you like, and some natural hazard issues we're just trying to sort out. They're all interrelated, land protection on the part of the Squamish Nation, fisheries habitat restoration, dredging in the channel, a bundle of issues there, but they are related to debris hazard management and...
However, they're not related to this bylaw, Eric? Unless you can articulate a reason why they're related to this bylaw.
It is an illustration of the merits of taking a general taxation approach, that we can consider these other issues in the community that arise.
Okay, thank you.
There is a policy statement in your presentation that goes as follows. "The OCP acknowledges that the fee simple lands owned by the Squamish Nation are an important component to the nation's economic development interests. Through OCP policy, the district is committed to working with the nation on joint planning and respecting the nation's fee simple lands. Those fee simple lands also include Site B, of course, in the Mamquam Blind Channel." There is a small point to make, I'd like to make on, there's reference to a debris storage site as the maintenance of the proposed debris control structure. This also is an issue that may deserve some consultation, I'd like to make note of that. It may have some implications on our other choice of sites, on other implications for land use users in the Chikai Fan. And finally, and acknowledging that Chief Dale Harry is mentioning that this has gone on for quite a long time, yes, and there's quite a bundle of reports, and they're all attached by links in this one here, and I'd just like to express appreciation to your staff for sorting through a very complex set of issues and long period of time in putting together a very, I think, a very clear report. And I think that your staff should be commended on this, and this list of reports at the end of the document this evening is really very useful, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. I will, please, please don't clap, thank you. I will just ask, Tori, you're on my bad books right now, maybe I could just ask for clarification on that one comment Mr. Anderson made with regard to the local service area. I think council was under the impression that the local service area would be only applied to this development and not necessarily other entities on the fan, is that correct?
That is correct. It would only apply to this development in the future. If there's new development on the fan, then there would be an opportunity to explore whether the service area should be expanded if those developments take advantage of the debris mitigation.
Okay, I just wanted to have that clarified, and you're welcome to come up later if you have more questions about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Hawkins, and up on deck is Jessemie Freese.
Hello, I'm Ben Hawkins. I have 41450 Government Road, and also work at 46011 Government Road at the Squamish Airport. I'm a Brackendale resident and manager in a business that is located at the Squamish Airport, and I have two points I'd like to highlight. I hope it was not intentional, but all of your maps cunningly do not show the Squamish Municipal Airport. They're all nicely cut off there. The proposed development area is within one kilometer of the runway at the airport. The airport is almost 50 years old now and has functioned as such surrounded by the existing zone lands. Will the district be requiring the developer to disclose to prospective buyers they are buying close to a functioning airport and its associated noise? The whole of the development will be under the downwind leg of the most commonly-used runway with aircraft passing overhead at 1,000 feet. We already have a noise abatement procedure in place that was required to deal with the last expansion to the south and west of the airport, and now we're being enclosed to the south and the east of the airport. If the development proceeds, point number two, sorry, if the development proceeds with the above disclosure in place, does the district intend to continue the water main up to the airport, which has been one of the two reasons why the airport tenants, the other one being the Chikai debris flow, cannot get more than a one-year lease, and preventing the four successful businesses from building stability and jobs for the local community and the economy? We can support the development if the district supports us with water, sewer, long-term leases, and a policy to have airport disclosures for the buyers at the north end of Brackendale. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Jessemie Freese? I always forget how to pronounce your last name. On deck is Deborah Baker.
Thank you. My name is Jessemie Freese. My address is 60050 Squamish Valley Road, and I'd like to speak in support of this proposal. I am the owner, along with my husband, of Fergie's Cafe, What's Left, and Sunwurf Resort. Until the cafe closed recently due to a fire, we did have 40 staff in our peak season. We bring a lot of people to town. The resort is still open, we have 40 weddings there this summer. We also took some matters into our own hands, and we have purchased additional property on the fan in order to provide affordable housing for our staff. And my own home as well is right there on the fan. So listening to David talk about the potential area affected by something coming down, it seems to me it's kind of my house all the way across to Mamquam. That includes a large number of residences, schools, including Don Ross, where every single child in Squamish goes to school, as far as I'm aware, the Village of Brackendale, Garibaldi Estates, our airport, our Hydro Substation, even our landfill would be a big impact if we had no landfill for a period of time, and of course, the highway to Whistler, which would impact Whistler, but also a lot of people who commute there. And the thing that surprises me is when I talk to people in town, is how few people who would be impacted are even really aware of this fan. It seems to be something that's, people's awareness is very limited geographically. I've read through their concerns in the letters and talked to other people. I understand there's substantial concerns about costs, about a lack of information, which I almost think is inevitable, this is going to be a world-class, kind of an exciting proposal, because there's not much that's been done out in the world. The wildlife and environmental concerns, and even changing the fate of Brackendale, these all seem well-founded, but it seems to me that this is about safety, about the safety of people who are already there, who already have businesses there, of the children in those schools. And it appears to me that the, like me, because I am acutely aware of the danger, the Squamish Nation are acutely aware of the danger of their people, and they've come up with a solution. And I suppose I want to ask staff, if this proposal does not go ahead, what alternatives does the district have and who would be paying for them?
Well, we're going to...
Sorry.
...answer all the questions, and we'll make sure they get answered, sort of as one big thing, but...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have Kana, Deborah Baker, did I pronounce that correctly? Awesome. And on deck is Astrid Anderson.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having this public hearing today. Really want to thank our Ciam, Chief Dale Harry, for his good words that he shared a few minutes ago, and all the other speakers that have also shared their words. Want to thank our elders from the Squamish Nation that are here with us today. Time goes so, so fast, 15 years. So a lot has happened, a lot of development has happened all around us. Oh, my address. Totem Hall is, I'm Squamish Nation representative, elected official, co-chair with Joshua Joseph, who sends his regrets, 1380 Stopmiss Road, Squamish, BC, V8B.
That's okay.
Oh, okay. By the way, I really like the Squamish Airport. Where is the representative from the airport? Oh, there, okay. That's an awesome airport, by the way. Really want to hold up my hands to the staff. This is, I can imagine, by no means am I an engineer or anything like that, but the information that has been shared today, tonight, I really appreciate it. And of course, when I look at this document here, I go right to the back, the last page, and if it's okay, your worship, I'd like to read out CA... the back, the last page, and if it's okay, your worship, I'd like to read out, C A O recommendation, that the recommendation of the community planning department be approved. And that's all to the good work that you have all, and the mayor and council have done. So just really wanted to share a few words of support of the amendment, and I really look forward to the day when, soon, I hope, third reading. And as was mentioned by our CM, Chief Dale Harry, the Squamish Valley in a very short period of time will be our largest, if it is not already. In land base, it's our largest for the Squamish Nation, but population-wise, this will be where our headquarters are, and rightfully so. So we look forward to future discussions and working with the Squamish mayor and council, as well as the staff and, and the residents of the Squamish Valley. OCE.
Thank you. Astrid Anderson, and on deck is Cassandra Zarabeski. Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business, or an organization.
I'm Astrid Anderson, I live at 38316 Vista Crescent Hospital Hill, and I have been a homeowner in Squamish for 57 years, and a taxpayer that long too. With a large development like this, as well as on the waterfront, who will pay for the needed infrastructure, such as water supply and expanded sewer plant? A long-time permanent housing versus the airport, only gets one-year lease due to the Chikai Fan danger, why the discrepancy for a long-term housing development in the airport one year? Is that fair? Is that right? A previous development in the same location was stopped due to the Chikai Fan hazard many years ago. The pavement and other infrastructure is still visible. I am not in favor of sharing the cost of the hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassandra Zarabeski, and on deck is Chris Pedingo, and that's the end of my list. If you would like to speak at the public hearing, I encourage you still to put your name with Terry over there, and once I get through the list, I will go to, out to the public. Welcome.
Hi there, I'm Cassandra Zarabeski, I live at 42025 Government Road in Brackendale, where I've been a resident the last 13 years. Forgive me for the little one, this is Emerson, one of my three little boys. My comment is just that I understand the risk and the need for the barrier, and that is something that I could support, I just have serious concerns with the density. I think we, as we have noted, we all see the infrastructure, the lack of infrastructure in Squamish, and that would be my only concern is...
Just give them to Dave.
Yes. Is just looking at the long-term and how we add all this to the population, and with not having as much of the infrastructure we need to support that, you know, it's already so busy on government, and as I already knew that moving into that neighborhood, but just looking at how that's going to impact all the area and the schools, I would, I would love to see it go back to one of the first original development proposals in the 700 range, because that's something that would be easier for me to live with as, you know, somebody in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Pedingo, state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
Thank you. Chris Pedingo, 1065 J Crescent, just representing myself with a few clarifying questions. My understanding of CACs is that in the normal situation, council may decide to grant a developer a zoning upgrade, and then the property then sees a nearly immediate increase in value. But in this case, that's not necessarily the situation because of this barrier there, there isn't necessarily that property value increase, so I guess I'm just wondering if the CAC discussion is just for context, or otherwise how we justify this, because it seems that it's a little bit out of the ordinary in terms of normal CAC application, and so I'm just wanting to understand that a bit better. Also, wanting to understand our justification for not sharing the capital costs, as well as operational potentially, given the risk to the rest of Squamish. You know, we've seen in the last couple of years, climate change is accelerating kind of near the extremes of our, our estimates, and, and I'm wondering if the risk models that we had done on this were sensitive enough to, to, to be aware of climate change and those impacts, and if, as we're seeing climate change increase more quickly, if, if there's any sense that the risk is higher than even two years ago. I also recall some discussion that this would be considered a dyke, and because the district is a dyking authority, we would have all sorts of special, unique obligations, and I'm just wondering if there's some clarification on is, would this be a dyke, and under all those regulations, or is this something unique with a special set of rules? And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one more speaker on my list, and then we'll get some clarifying answers, and we'll go back with the public after that. Alan Barr. Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
I am Alan Barr, 45 Beach Drive, Furry Creek, DC. Third generation here in the community, relatively new compared to our First Nations community. I support the project for a few reasons, I guess I look at and I see there's 67 or 60-plus million dollars' worth of amenities going to our community. There's a lot of, our community are currently under more considerable risk that we can mitigate, right down to, as we heard here today, arguably to the Mount Lem River dyke. The First Nations community who's lived there, somebody said it here earlier, living down a gun barrel, I bet it feels like that on a stormy night up there for them. And I can't imagine what it's like, wondering if that thing's going to fail, and it would only take a minor failure for them to be the first affected, never mind the rest of us. Who, in all the years I've been here, have come forward, and there's been a lot of talk about the Chikai Fan, who has come forward with a plan, and the funding, and a solution to resolve a considerable risk for our community? This is the only one that I know of. So for those reasons, I know there's, there's always, for a benefit, there's a price to pay somewhere else, but, but the risk to our safety as a community is significant, in my view, so I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. We'll go to staff now to perhaps provide some answers or clarification to some comments and questions. And I know that the, I know Matthias, who did basically a lot of the geotechnical analysis for the proponent, is here, so if we want to ask him to come up and speak to particular risk models and that type of thing, maybe, maybe I'll ask you to come up and do that now. There were some questions about the risk models and climate change, and I know that after the events up at Mount Meeger in 2010, there was a reanalysis of the risk potential with these types of things, and that was the information that the, the expert panel spoke to, so I'm wondering if you could maybe just speak to that, provide some clarification on whether or not climate change and other, what risk models have gone into the analysis?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. So my name is Matthias Jakob, I work with BGC Engineering, I've also been involved in this project since 2001, and I suppose I'm an expert in the aspects of hazard and risk assessments. So there was the question by one of the gentlemen about climate change. Now, when we try to decipher the hazards, and particularly how often they come down and how big they get, we look very far back in time, and luckily, there was numerous, numerous studies have been done prior to our involvement by colleagues, professors, and so on, and we do have a record that goes back almost 12,000 years. So we use that record essentially arguing that the past is the key to the present, and thereby to the future. Now, climate change is a very good point, oh, there we go, climate change is a very good point, because climate change science currently tells us that not only the magnitude of extreme events will increase, but also their frequency. In fact, the frequency of hydroclimatic extremes, so really a lot of rain, really bad weather, is supposed to go up by a factor of three or four in the next 100 years or so, and the magnitude also considerably. So what does that mean, then? Well, when we looked back in time, really far back in time, we examined events that happened at an era that we call the early Holocene. In the early Holocene, so say 12,000, 10,000, 9,000 years ago, all hell broke loose, all hell broke loose because everything was covered by glaciers, you know, there was like, top of Mount Garibaldi, Dalton Dome, and those, those were sticking out of the ice, but everything else was covered by ice. There was also volcanic activity at the time, so the Ring Creek lava came down, I think, 9,000 years ago or so, so everything was pretty darn unstable. So then the ice essentially melted away, and, but you didn't have any vegetation covering anything, so you had dirt covering the entire mountainside. Weather was pretty bad then, too, so all this stuff came down, and these events that we dated, like the one 11,600 years ago, which we got out of a Stump Lake borehole, arguing that flows could have gone over the sill out of Chika and into Stump Lake, and Michael Pierre Freely here was involved in that work. So arguably, one could say, well, that really shouldn't be involved in this analysis, because the conditions were really different. But we did, to err on the conservative side. So climate change may throw some surprises at us, but by having involved, or having included this long spectrum of events way back when, when things were a lot worse than they are now, we hope to be erring on the, on the conservative side. What we do can expect, though, is that because of this intensity increase that is predicted by many fancy models that those climatologists run, will give us a lot more small events. That is a pretty, that I can say is reasonable certainty. The really big events, which is a part of the mountain cliff actually falling off and then going liquid on us, that is a difficult question. We don't know much about how they will change in terms of, are they going to be more often or bigger? Hope that answers the question, a little long-winded, but once I start talking...
Everyone was geeking out there for a minute, it was awesome.
I can't stop.
Thank you.
Is that the only one with regard to the...
So far, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matthias. There was a question about the infrastructure, water, sewer in the area, and road capacity. I'm wondering who would be, Chris or Jonas, can you speak to that?
Sure, I think I'm just going to start off, and then I can pass it off to Dave or David, but in regards to how it applies to the airport, so the proposal doesn't include extending services to the airport, but one of the reasons why the district hasn't made any investments of late is because of the hazard level, and with mitigation, that might change. And I'll pass it off to Dave in terms of traffic.
Maybe I'll just clarify, there was a, that was my next question, but you can answer that one now. The, we only do one-year leases on the airport currently, once the, if there's a mitigation structure put there, then we could consider longer-term leases and more permanent structures, correct?
Exactly.
At the airport.
Yeah, the hazard level would be reduced to acceptable levels, potentially for existing development. There was also a comment about noise abatement requirements in the area, I think that's a very good comment, and that's something that we can incorporate in the land development agreement, and that would be brought forward at adoption of the bylaws.
For the flight path.
For the flight path, that's right.
Thank you. Water, sewer, road capacity in the area?
I can address that. So the question was, who pays for the infrastructure required to service this? As part of the original proposal, some servicing assessment was done for water and sanitary sewer servicing.
Yeah, bring it close to you, Dave, thanks.
Pardon me, I'll start again. The question was, who pays for services to this development?
And not just who pays for, but what's the existing capacity?
Right. As part of the original development, which was the 750 single-family homes, there was water and sanitary sewer servicing assessment completed, as well as a traffic impact assessment. Those reports identified several upgrades to the road network, the existing road network, as well as upgrades to the water system and sanitary sewer system to service the site, essentially, to provide enough capacity to provide water, fire flows to the site, as well as manage the sewage generated. As part of the updated proposal, which includes higher density and some commercial development, the developer will be required to provide updated servicing reports and traffic impact assessment reports, and if any major deviations from the original reports appear, then those will be incorporated into the development.
Thank you. There was a question about, is this considered a dyke under the provincial legislation? David, you want to answer that one?
Yes, through the mayor, this would be considered a dyke. The provincial guidelines say that anything that holds back water, a debris flow contains a significant amount of water, and we have had discussions with the province, and they've indicated that this would be considered a dyke.
Yeah, and this, this has been a bit of an area of discussion with the province, because this barrier is designed to let water go through it and hold back debris. However, it sounds like the province's language and definitions haven't caught up with this type of structure, and both the dyking definitions and EMBC funding models don't really consider debris flow structures differently than dykes, and they function differently, so in our conversations with the province, there's likely some updating of their legislation and language around this, as they approve more of these or encourage more of these around the province. Just give people some background information. Were there any more questions that you heard, Jonas?
There was a question about need for robust engagement when it comes to the debris storage area, and I think when we're at that point, and the design is being done, we'll certainly engage any stakeholders that would be affected by it. There was also a question about more understanding regarding the nuances of the CAC policy and why the capital costs are, are not shared. So I think the answer to that is, like any proposal, the CAC is somewhat unique. In this case, and as with previous cases, we don't consider the, the hazard mitigation to be part of the community amenity contribution, because it's necessary simply to allow development. And also the costs, the capital costs are significant, but also the long-term maintenance costs are significant, and that's why we're proposing that the long-term maintenance costs should be looked at for potential cost sharing between development and the district, rather than capital costs.
Thank you. I don't have anyone on my speakers list, but if you'd like to ask, speak to the public hearing, please, please put your hand up, and I'll acknowledge you. Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. It is a good report, and, you know, to Dale's point, to Chief Dale Harry's point...
Questions, questions, you have a question? We're not here to make comments.
Yeah, I know. You do that to me all the time.
But, ask a question, it's a public hearing.
Takes me a minute to get to a question. To Dale's point, the 15 years that everybody's been working on, well, it's more than 15 years. Patty's been on council 15 years.
No, I haven't.
I heard Dale say, the province was the guys that moved everybody out in the way of this debris flow, and so, when we look at the funding model, and I see we've got three different funding models, where the province, you know, the province contributes, the province contributes, or we do it all. And every time the province contributes, our numbers all go down. And based on the history on this, I just want to know, when we go into the province, are we going in with the First Nations negotiating team and rattling their chain a little bit?
So I think one clarification, it was the federal government that moved the village, correct Dale, to the checkmish reserve area, yeah, it was the federal government. And I think, if I may help Counselor Pryor, the only portion the province could potentially fund is in the case of an event, a major event, and EMBC funding, emergency management for Squamish funding would, would, would come into effect. An EMBC funding, emergency management first Columbia funding would come into effect. They aren't, province is not in any of the operational maintenance funding and they are none of, in any of the reserve building funding. It's only in a significant event that they would come in with emergency funding.
If I may, pre-mayor, it impacts, if the province agrees to fund, it impacts our reserve building in that we don't, we only have to build essentially 20% of what we would need to recover from these larger events. And we've been involving the Squamish Nation in our discussions with the province, absolutely.
So does that mean we're getting a collaborative approach at getting as much funding as we can?
We are certainly using that approach and will continue to use it, you know, as this development review moves through the process. We've just laid out all the options. Obviously, the option we're pursuing is with provincial funding.
Yeah, I really think those guys need to be bucking up, too. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Kent, I'll just quickly go to council questions and then I'll go back to the public. Councilor Kent, Councilor Elliott, Councilor Chappelle?
Thank you. And just further to that point that Ted just made, I hope that when we speak to the province, we're reminding them of their infrastructure that's in the hazard flow as well, their highway that leads to Whistler, the hydro station that's there, et cetera, et cetera. Not just the people that live in harm's way, but their own infrastructure.
Yes, absolutely.
Which they should be funding to protect. Thank you.
Councilor Elliott.
So a few people mentioned the fact that the confluence of the Chikai and the Chakamish River and the residents who live there and the Chakamish Reserve are sort of looking down the gun barrel, which is true. But when I look at the technical reports, the debris flow barrier is designed to let smaller events through, which creates residual risk for those areas. So I'm wondering if the design and that $45 million number includes added mitigation to ensure that even the smaller events that are allowed to pass through the barrier don't affect Chakamish Reserve and the residents at the confluence.
Maybe you'll see if Matthias wants to speak to that and David, if you want to follow up.
Sure, so I'll make it crisp and short. This, the 45 million does not include additional measures at this stage. There is going to be a seesaw pattern between the opening size of the barrier, and that hasn't been optimized. Small opening, meaning little goes through or not, or just water and no debris. Little bit bigger means little debris flows are allowed to pass. But every time we'll do one of these scenarios, we'll do the risk analysis and see, could anybody get killed depending on if we leave that much open or that much open? So it's going to be a bit of an academic arm wrestle to see how it can be optimized. And if additional structures downstream should supplement the main barrier, that has not been done yet.
But consideration of those additional structures would be considered as you look at your risk tolerance as the design fills out. So what I don't want to get to is an end design that still leaves the Chakamish Reserve unprotected even for a one- and 50-year event or 20?
Yes, my understanding is that there is a commitment by council and the mayor that the risk, and staff, of course, that the risk has to go below certain thresholds. And that, of course, includes every single part of the Chikai Fan, no matter where.
David, did you want to add to that?
No, I think that largely addresses it. Just to echo the final point was that the final mitigation needs to get risk for the entire Chikai Fan to a tolerable level. So it's not just for this development site. It would be any area within, within the debris flow hazard area, including the Chakamish Reserve.
Thank you. Councilor Chappelle?
Thank you. Because of protection of the reserves, I'm wondering, I know we've explored provincial funding, but I'm wondering about federal funding for protection of the reserves and involvement of the First Nations in this project?
We have not explored federal funding. We've been pursuing funding with the province.
Thanks. I believe the developer has looked at federal funding sources. I don't think they got any, but I believe they looked at it at one point. Is that correct? I remember there was an application to a fund, I think an infrastructure fund, that the developer made. Maybe-
I'm not, I'm talking about long-term infrastructure funding for the cleanout of the area.
Ongoing maintenance? No. Yep. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah, please come up and state your name and address and if you represent yourself a business or an organization.
My name is Dordi Froslav. I live at 401950 Government Road. This is probably a really ignorant, stupid question, but there was, it's been a lot of really good, interesting information here about geology and whatever the heck else and money. But one of the speakers came up and said that she just recommends that you go forward with whatever it is you're supposed to be voting on today. I would like to know what exactly it is you are voting on. It says that the recommendation of the community plan department be approved. What exactly is being approved here in this step of what's going on here? And what does it mean?
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the staff report proposes information to council and to the community to be presented at the public hearing. There is no recommendation here to move the development to a third reading tonight. If the public hearing concludes tonight, staff will bring forward another report with the comments received at the public hearing as well as any conditions that would be required to proceed after the third reading.
So what's in front of council are the bylaws that are in the report? There's no recommendation from staff on how council should vote on the bylaws? It's simply information for us to consider? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please come up and state your name and your address and if you represent yourself a business or an organization.
My name is Robert Daniel Baker. I live at Jeep Billy Drive in Squamish. I've listened to all these plans and I get kind of twisting me around here because when they build, when they build Whistler Mountain, and we never expect to see anything wrong with it, it took maybe about 10 years and we found out what they were doing. There are sewers that were coming right down our river. And I guess you know that too because it was pretty dirty around here. And I always say, make sure, if you're going to build something, I even talked to, when we had a meeting with the mayor, make sure they have a good sewer system. Because we all live down here. We live down the bottom of here. All that water comes down. And I, you know, I lived here. I came up here in 1937. I came up by canoe. That's how long I've been here. And I even saw this, this whole town went underwater in 37, 38, somewhere around there. And we had a picture taken, we were standing. Our canoes were tied up to that, tied up to that store that's down Brackenville. There's about three, four canoes there. And I was there. But it shows you what changes there is. You know, they built a dam up there and I don't know. It just made it worse for most of the people in value here. And I've seen this river change so damn many times. It's been going back and forth all the time. And we're talking about land and buildings and we're the ones that lost all this. We lived right along the river. I got my ancestral name from the river. And that's, we lived in Chakamish. And I keep telling the engineers, you go down and look at Chakamish. This is what we're worried about. If they don't start dredging that river, it's going to take everything away down here. And nobody listens to those things like that. You see, we're all here, we're all talking about our homes and where we want to live. We already done that. You know, I, sometimes I feel like crying seeing our people have no home because they, all our homes are along the river. Now we can't build here, they say you, it's all flood, flood zone. No, it wasn't. I lived there, my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather's lived there. And they keep asking me the pressure reason I, I tell them, this river doesn't stay in one place, it's moving all the time. So this is what we gotta, when you're building a home up here in the valley, that's what you got to look at. Make sure you're safe. I know we're in higher ground here. But you don't know what's going to happen. Like somebody talking about the change of the weather and all that. I was a fisherman. I fished 40 years out in the ocean. I logged 40 years. And I worked so hard all my life and I'm just looking at what you young people are doing. You all want homes, you all want land. May everybody happy. But you will never be happy if you don't get along and do things together. This is great what you're doing here. But when you get outside, that somebody came up, who's going to pay for the sewers? Who's going to pay for the water? Who's going to pay for this? I don't know. If you want to live here, you got to pay for it, like us, like we do. I had to say those few things because, you know, I'm sitting there listening to different things that I don't understand. I know I built my home back in the 1960s and a brand-new home was worth $7,000, $7,200, three-bedroom. Now you look at it, that same house is worth $500,000. So you got lots of, lots of things to do. Got to have, there's no work here in Squamish for our people. So I just feel sorry for the people that have to come up here from Vancouver. And the other thing, too, is the highway. It's filled up with cars right now. What's going to happen when you start building, building more places to live? The highway's not going to be big enough. So the taxpayer's got to pay more. I'm not worried about that. I'm just happy to see people building homes for the, for the younger people so they can go to school here and learn. I didn't have that. I went to residential school, I was locked up for eight years in that school. So it's good, good to see people thinking about each other because we didn't have that. I had to say those few things just to kind of ease my mind because I'd sit there and I don't understand. I look at, I look at these here, and I ask my missus, what is this all about? And she told me where the graveyard was and I got on right away. So I see everything now, what's happening. But make sure everything's safe, your water, your place where you're going to live. You don't know what's going to come down from that mountain. You don't know if it's going to be a volcano. You don't know if it's going to be an earthquake. You got to set yourself up good and proper. And I think that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Yep, please come up and state your name and your address and if you represent yourself a business or an organization.
My name is Holland Dinos. Talk for myself on the Allee von Muß Road in Hard Rock Action. If it comes through. I have two questions, several questions. There was always talk about this barrier would hold 5.5 million. Just now, what's, I thought I hear 2.8 or something like this. Is that correct?
David, it's 2.8 million cubic meters that event that this barrier would theoretically contain?
I think that is right now the proposal, but that does need to be refined through the design process.
That would be just half of what was discussed before. Then I think, or as I understand the thing, it will hold to go forward with a barrier, it hinges very much on the province if they chip in with finances in case of a major event. Because it would eventually stretch, overstretch the community. So where is that, is, at the moment, is the province coming around, will it chip in? Or is it a year off until it goes ahead? I mean, there is, there's development, sign up on a Chikai Fan for this high-tech CO2 facility. They cannot be there if there's no barrier. I imagine.
That's a separate application and they have to do their own geotechnical site analysis there. So I don't, we don't think we necessarily have to go onto that topic. But David, I'm wondering if you can speak to EMBC's policies around how they get involved in major event emergency management costs?
So the province has guidelines with respect to disaster financial assistance. And their guidelines indicate that 80% of recovery costs following a large debris flow in this case would be eligible for disaster financial assistance if the minister deems it an eligible event. So the district has been trying to gain some certainty through a memorandum of understanding with the province that says if there is a major event, under what conditions would the province step forward with that disaster financial assistance? Because if they didn't, then that would place a larger financial burden on the district. And so those discussions are ongoing. We haven't received any sort of certainty from the province at this stage, but that, those discussions are ongoing and we're going to continue to seek that certainty.
So they are leaning towards it or against it?
Right now, the guidelines and their policy indicates that it would be an eligible expense for disaster financial assistance. We're just trying to get greater certainty on that so that-
Do you signature?
Yes.
And just a little bit more to that. There is sort of a vulnerability from a financial standpoint for the municipality for the first 40 or so years as the reserve is accumulated. And so we've talked to the province about how do the NBC standards make sure that we're not at financial risk during that period? So that's part of the conversation as well. And it was, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to also try to address the question that's come up a couple of times on the one in 10,000, which is a 5.5 million versus the one in 2,500, which is a 2.8. It's a, it's a, it's a difficult concept to, I think we're all very used to flood levels and flood returns and looking at, we're going to mitigate this event. And if this event happens, not a drop of water gets through. In a, in looking at this debris barrier, we're looking at a risk-based and not a hazard-based. So we're looking at, in all of these different possible events that could happen, how do we make sure that the risk of loss of life fan-wide is acceptable?
How much, how many people are allowed to die?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. How many people?
Yeah.
There's basically, there's a table that shows what those risks are.
I know the table, okay.
Yeah, and that's the expert panel number two gave guidance on that. And there's some international standards that the district is relying on. It's becoming a more prevalent standard. It's basically statistical and it is quite low. It's looking at, you know, one in 100,000 chance of- It's, it's looking at, you know, one in a hundred thousand chance of a person losing their life in a given year.
Well, I personally want to also comment, like, people always think the Chikai itself, the Chikai fan is on danger. But it's also big chunk of bracken tail. And eventually, the new developments here on a golf course, I mean, the water runs downhill. And there is quite a bottleneck there, who will divert the water down to Squamish. And if you have a three feet of gravel, there is no traveling to Wistler or good knows where. And for a long time, so. It's not just the people on a Chikai fan who are affected.
There was an analysis done, I'm not sure if it's in the reporter and previous reports, that indicate there's a nine hundred million dollar risk to the province currently in every structure and theoretically, CNBC costs without the structure today, without the new development. That's just the existing financial risk to the province today.
So, sorry, just to, through, through the chair, just to try to finish my thought. The risk-based design takes into account a one in ten thousand year event. So everything up to and including a one in ten thousand year event, if we look at all of those possible events, the risk must be in the ALARP zone, so.
Can you just say what ALARP is for people's?
Sorry, as low as reasonably practicable. And so the vol, the exact volume that, that will be required to, and, and the exact configuration to get us to that zone of, of risk is up to the, to the detailed design, conceptually, it looks like probably two point eight million cubic meters.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Yeah, come on up and state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
Hi, my name's Kristen Gully, I live at four one five eight eight Brennan Road, and I represent myself. That's all the questions, right? Okay. I just wasn't sure if you answered the lady's question from Fergie's as to if the barrier doesn't get built by the developer, what is going to happen? I might not have heard the answer, I went to the bathroom.
So.
We've looked, as presented in the report, we've looked at the different options, alternatives. I believe we've allocated some money in the future for a risk assessment. But at this point, we're, we're kind of waiting to see what happens with this development before we go into, you know, choosing an option, Plan B essentially.
David?
Further to that, so there's been some discussion of this 2016 Kurvad Liddell report. It was an assessment of mitigation alternatives for the Chikai fan. They looked at a number of different barriers and berms, so barriers in different locations of the fan, berms in different locations of the fan, as well as retreating existing development from the fan. So I think there was eight different options that were looked into. This upper canyon barrier was identified as the preferred option for two reasons. One is that it, the further up that the mitigation structure is, the greater area that it protects. So this option protects the greatest area, and also because it was being proposed to be funded by, through development. So for those two reasons, the recommendation was that we, first of all, pursue this option and see if this is feasible and can be done. And if after going through this process, we find out that it's not feasible, then to look at the second or third options that were ranked in that Kurvad Liddell report, which would be funded by likely the district.
And I suspect we would look for funding through the provincial and federal governments, as well as other partners.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Yes, please come up and state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
My name is Angela Walsh, and I represent myself, I live at four one nine one seven Ross Road. So I was at the first public hearing, I think it was the first one, this is the second one, right? Last January, year and a half ago, and that was a, a big one, lots of speakers. It was a little overwhelming, not sure if anyone was there. But I heard a lot of things having to do with affordable housing. And I'm still really curious, especially as the prices of houses continue to skyrocket in Squamish. What in layman's terms and in reality is, does affordable housing mean and for whom? And that, that's, that's an issue for me, because that's one of the things I continue to hear. Another huge thing, living where we do on Ross Road, is we're very concerned about the density. It seems it went from seven hundred and something to twelve hundred. I'm really curious, what is the real need for this? Is there some sense of population growth that's supposed to happen or that we want to happen? What is the need for this development in general? And in that same regard, I'm curious about things living on Ross Road, being the main thoroughfare that this development is situated on. Looking at the plans, I don't see any other really roots out. Everything seems to converge either on government or it converges on Ross, which of course, on an everyday means the traffic will go up, but especially as we're talking about things like climate change, and every time I get a whiff of smoke in July, I worry about a wildfire and people getting out of there. What are the disaster routes in place and things like that? That's a concern as a resident there. Why this development in this area? It is a significant wildlife corridor, I'm not sure how many of you have read Rachel's letter. But it's excellent, and it brings up some real concerns as a resident, but also as a human being on the planet, where we're so concerned with developing everything all the time. We have real diversity in the forest, a lot of us have walked it with our dogs off-leash and had the freedom to do so. And because this is a hearing about zone applications and amendments, I am really concerned that we're not really taking a good look at how we are allocating this land. And should we be, as a teacher, thinking, I'm thinking all the time, of how can we continue to educate and conserve local habitat for the purposes of just enjoying the natural environment and having people go in and learn about it and so on, and also knowing how much wildlife walks through our backyard, literally, daily. We know that they will be pushed out, and where will they go? I think that's something we need to be concerned about. The biggest thing I've heard as a concern at this meeting so far, and I think rightfully so, is this barrier that obviously needs to be built. It's obvious. And I realize that the development is an, as a, as an avenue to get it going is important to look at first. But again, why this development? Is this a trade-off? Are we trading twelve hundred units for a high-density development for this develop, this barrier that is very much needed that the provincial or federal government should be helping us to build? And in the report I heard, I think I heard this correctly, regardless of the development of the barrier, it needs to be built. Regardless of this development, the barrier needs to be built. So what are the real issues that need to be addressed here? What does the development really represent? We have issues of indigenous land rights and use, obviously very important to consider. Affordable housing, for who? What are the goals there? And safety is a very big concern. The barrier needs to go up. We need to figure that out, but is the development the way we have to do it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Yep, please come up and state your name and address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
John Matthews, three seven seven four nine Cleveland Avenue, speaking on behalf of the proponent. This has been fifteen years in the making. It's a complex problem that pulls together multiple governments, debris flow experts, growth management policies, all sort of converging on this development. The fifteen years built us, brought us to this solution, and we, we believe that it sort of is a elegant compromise in providing safety to a community and pairing it with smart growth principles. You know, we are lucky to have BGC, one of the world's foremost debris flow experts, working alongside the district and ourself to get to an end solution. And we feel privileged to be working in a community that is so passionate and comes out and converses with us. We have an open door at our office and would love to continue conversations with people at any time. So I want to thank you guys for taking the time out of your night to, to be here and present your concerns. So thank you, council, thank you staff, and thank you everyone here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Yes, please come up and state your name and address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
Yeah, my name, my English name is Tom Harry, my ancestral name is Locksmo, born and raised here. One of the things that was always, are in our minds, and then my brother said it, and I hear a lot of the community members say it, is debris flow. And one of the caps that I have is wearing is, I'm a Squamish Nation peacekeeper, that run and operated this for almost thirty years, and one of our biggest problems, we're dealing with natural disasters. And one of the biggest debris flow comes down is the Chakamis. We do have some of that come off the Squamish River, but it's all protected with the diking system. But you talk about fifteen years. Nineteen eighty was the first time we ever had to really move people out of their homes because of the, the flooding debris flow. And it affected right from Chikai, right down to downtown Squamish. Because we ended up being almost what, two, three feet out in water? But I do support this project because of the protection it's gonna provide, not just for our Aboriginal communities, but also Squamish as whole. And everybody worries about what's gonna happen when you got a big downed, drenched pour. And we had one back in two thousand five, two thousand, no, two thousand eight, when that debris flow came down the Chakamis, the little Chikai, and almost dammed the big Chikai River. And that was just a good five, six hour downpour. You know, and in our minds, we always have to protect the people first and then the property. But with this project, and if we do get it to go through, then the protection from the debris flow would leave you a lot of, saving of, us a lot of lives and livestock. You know, it will go a long way. I've always said that in part of development, when you do development, you're gonna attract more people into the area. You know, I've been here all my life, and I saw this town grow. You know, we used to walk down the street, we knew everybody. But this day and time, we get thousands of people walking around. But that's just me as being an Aboriginal and seeing this town, but I, I do believe that this needs to go ahead, and that it will not just help us, but it will help everybody in the, in the long run. So, and I'm Squamish Reserve, three seven five six five one, Squamish Road, thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? I'll just quickly go to council to see if there are any more questions for clarification purposes. Counselor Elliott?
One of the things that the report makes clear is that we don't have a lot of details until a design is created for the barrier. So perhaps staff could speak to what third reading and adoption looks like in terms of how we proceed forward? Because I imagine there's a number of conditions that council will need to consider, and it's probably helpful for the community to understand what those are as well.
Yes, through you, mayor. The third reading consideration will be accompanied with a long list of conditions related to the, the re-hazard mitigation, operations and maintenance, regime establishment, as well as any community and many type of conditions that would have to be secured for a land development agreement. So at third reading, we will establish all of the conditions pertaining to the hazard, both the establishment of, sorry, the design of the mitigation system establishment, as well as how the funding mechanisms will have to be determined before adoption of the bylaw. And then at adoption of the bylaw, a lot of these issues will, the detailed design will have to be done better, which will probably produce a better understanding of how the cost estimates are affected by that, as well as how the funding mechanisms relate to that. And then, like I said, any conditions would be secured in a land development agreement that pertain to amenities that would be registered at adoption.
We have approached the province with the nation for some assurances on the province's contribution if, if an event happens, a large event. If, so after public hearing, council is technically not allowed to receive new information. So I'm wondering if you could just clarify what would bring us back to another public hearing? And, and what wouldn't? So, you know, if the province came back and said no, would we be back for a public hearing? If the province came back and said yes, we'll support you some?
I think because we have had some discussions with the province, and we understand both options, that an answer from the province alone wouldn't send us back to a public hearing. However, if the province came back with a scenario that we haven't anticipated, that would send it back to the public hearing. If the costs associated with the operations and maintenance came back, and they were significantly different than what we have presented today, that would send it back to public hearing. And if for some reason, the proposal came back, you know, where the district was suggested to be part of the capital costs, that would also send it back to public hearing. So the reason why we've laid out the options with and without the provincial funding is that, so they're clear now.
Counselor Reese?
Yeah. Thank you, I didn't want to lose, one or two previous speakers asked the question about affordable housing, and what do we think? How do you define that, or how would you characterize that? And also expressed concerns about density, this is a speaker that lived on Ross Road. And so I wonder if you might just comment on those?
Sure. Through you, mayor. The affordable housing definition that we, that we use for projects such as this essentially is tied to income levels for households in Squamish. And no more than thirty percent of the household income, which includes both single income households and multiple income households, no more than thirty percent could be spent on housing. And that would include your, any utilities associated with the housing. So we usually use that standard as the maximum for setting rents. And then we also add an additional provision which requires that in no case the rents be higher than eighty percent of the market rate. In terms of density, so the original proposal was for seven hundred and fifty single-family units. It didn't fit with our official community plan in terms of housing diversity and having a complete neighborhood, it didn't have commercial in there. So it was suggested to the proponent that in order to better align itself with the housing policies of our official community plan, without going outside of the proposed development footprint, that those additional housing forms be introduced. And that's what the proponent has done. Interestingly, traffic-wise, you know, one of the things we've, we've learned with looking at these new densities is that single-family developments generally generate more trips than multiple-family developments in terms of vehicle trips. So the impact on housing, on, on traffic is not anticipated to be very significant outside of the development. And inclusion of the neighborhood commercial component will also mitigate some of that traffic risk, in that people are not gonna have to drive outside of the area to, you know, do some of the basic neighborhood, get some, some of the basic neighborhood services.
Thanks, counsel, are there any more questions for clarification purposes? I'll go, I'll ask three time.
Okay, sorry. I'm, I'm curious about the CACs, because we've had a few proposals in front of us developing brownfield sites. And we've encouraged proponents And we've encouraged proponents to reach for the CAC policy that's under development. And for this development, which I think is a greenfield development, in our new OCP, we sort of suggest that greenfield development should reach a higher bar. Have we asked this proponent to reach on the CACs in terms of, you know, to the comment earlier, "Why this development? Why here? There's a forest there now." Do the CACs compensate for what's being built, according to our new policy?
Through you, Mayor. So we have had, you know, since the beginning of this process, we've had community amenity discussions. And the project does exceed our interim CAC policy. Unfortunately, we don't have yet the policy to replace it. We've had lots of discussions with council, but we haven't adopted yet a policy that would replace the interim policy. So I think the, I think this development exceeds our basic CAC policy, and it strives to meet the new goals, which is a mix of affordable housing, as well as a cash contribution towards the general amenities in the district. But I think we have to treat it a little separately, differently than a new application, per se, because it's been in the process for quite some time.
Am I allowed to do a comparison?
Go ahead.
We recently approved a development downtown, which is providing affordable housing over 10%, and making a cash contribution of half a million dollars. And that's for two apartment buildings. And this development is 1,200 units, greenfield, so not just a lot downtown. And the cash contribution is a million and a half. And I recognize there's affordable housing. I just want to make sure that we're setting the same standard here as we have for some of our brownfield developments and some of the developments that we're seeing downtown. I'm not sure that I see that equilibrium yet.
And I'll just add to that, because Counsel Blackman-Wolff isn't feeling well, that's why he's not here, but he made the point that although projects may have started during the past CAC evaluations, assessments have gone up in that time, land values have gone up in that time. And so regardless of how long a development's been in the application process, it should be meeting new standards for CACs. We've had that conversation with regard to other development applications along those lines. You don't have to answer that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if anyone else would like to speak at this public hearing, please come up. State your name and address, and if you represent yourself, a business, or an organization.
Hi again. John Matthews, 37749 Cleveland Avenue, speaking on behalf of the proponent. Just, I believe when we look at CACs, we're looking at the development as a whole. You guys covered sort of the basis of how we got here. And when we look at this development, although the district is not recognizing the contribution of a debris barrier, I think that needs to be a lens with which we look through this, because we think at a start, it's 45 million plus design costs, plus anything we run into along the way. To discount that and disregard it is, I don't think, quite fair to how we look at this, because it's, there's at some point where the development itself can't support a barrier. So to layer on and just completely disregard the barrier cost itself, I think wouldn't be a prudent way to consider this. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Come on up. I've got Mr. Burr, and then Mr. Freely. See, we still know people in town. We can name everyone going up.
I'm in Newleywood. Allen Barr, 45 Beach Drive, Furry Creek, BC. I heard today, I think you, the mayor, said that it was about $900 million worth of property potentially at risk if we did nothing. Is that correct? Rough, in rough numbers?
It was 890, yeah, roughly 900 million risk to the province currently in an emergency.
Yeah. So if we spend $65 million, or $69 million by the proponent, to alleviate a $900 million risk to the province, and whatever our share is as taxpayers, it seems to me to be a pretty good investment.
We're trying to convince the province of that.
Yeah. But then I ask the question, if we don't do this project, what would our taxes need to go up in Squamish to fund even half of that $900 million cost as we currently know it today? What would that increase be?
Well, that's the province's risk, if I understand it correctly, not technically our risk. However...
However...
We would have to build a structure of some kind that might be $10 million, it might be $30 million.
Okay, thank you.
And how we fund that is either through taxation, or grant funding through federal, provincial, or other ways.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Mr. Freely?
Pierre Freely, 1021 Raven Drive, speaking on behalf of myself. So what I'm curious about with this project, the protection structure and the development are lengthened, go together, but the protection structure has the added benefit of protecting the rest of Squamish. I moved to Squamish because of the green space, the recreation. A lot of people moved to Squamish for that value. If the project goes ahead, and the farthest upstream protection structure goes in, how does that change the risk perspective on the fan? And then what is the larger implication then of the project? Does that mean, right now, all we're talking about is this particular development, but the future seems to be that the entire Chikai Fan is then open for development? And that's a very different thing. It's a much broader implication. So I'd just like to understand that implication. What is the sort of long-term implication of this project beyond the immediate development?
That may be a question for both David and Mathias, or Jonas.
If I may start, and then I can give it over to David. Through you, Mayor. The other areas of the Chikai Fan, so north of this development, in the future where the risk has been mitigated, the district has made a commitment through our official community plan that we will go through a sub-area planning process in order to determine the vision for the Chikai Fan. So it would be a policy process that would have to follow before any, let's say, residential development was to come forward.
And further to that, the official community plan also talks about that, once a mitigation is put in place, that the district would come up with a development control policy to ensure that future land use beyond this development maintains risk within acceptable limits. So just because the barrier is built doesn't mean that it's just a free-for-all, and that we can put townhomes or high-density development all over the Chikai Fan. We still need to consider that the barrier may be sized not to withstand the largest event, and that there is still going to be some residual risk downstream. And so part of this overall mitigation strategy does need to consider future land use and maintaining acceptable risk.
Mathias, did you want to add to that? And I think what I'm hearing from David is, the closer you build out towards the hazard, the risk is still going to go up regardless of a barrier's there. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm happy to clarify that. So if you increase the density on the fan, risk goes up. So while the hazard may stay the same, an increase in the number of people that are subject to risk will go up. So that means either you have to limit development, or beyond what was initially called for, or you provide auxiliary mitigation, meaning onsite mitigation, or upgrade the proposed barrier, or add new mitigation measures downstream.
In the reports that were done in the 90s, it sort of had Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, Zone 4, and Zone 4, that's why the development there was stopped to begin with, because it was just too, your potential for risk was just too high. Is that the same case? Would there be sort of zones of risk within the fan with the structure?
Not really. So the zoning that was done by Thurberg older in the 90s was largely based on hazard rather than risk. We can actually create risk zones where we assume a certain density of houses. And then, given the modeling run-out results, we could say, if this were to go ahead, then the risk for this specific development, or the risk for the individual homes would be such. And we still would have to upgrade the societal risk calculations, because that is the overarching governing principle.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I saw, I saw a hand right in the front row here, Sasha, and then Chief Harry. You guys can rock, paper, scissors.
No, it won't take long. I just wanted to share, what's your name again? Yeah.
David Rolston.
David Rolston. Anyways, you know, he talked about some of the options on the Kerwood-Liddell report. I just want to remind district staff, and district council, and the mayor. I was in chief and council during that period of time when that Kerwood-Liddell report came out. And there was no way of hope in hell that was one of the options for the Squamish Nation to choose. For one, that Kerwood-Liddell report was transfer and risk to our community. That's what it was. And I tell you, that wasn't going to, that wasn't an option. It wasn't an option. And the other option that I read in that Kerwood-Liddell report was that they wanted to transfer our people out of that reserve, or the reserves. And can you imagine district council, mayor and council telling the residents of Brackendell, "You have to, we're going to transfer you"? Political suicide for a leader of the day. That wasn't going to happen with our, with our nation, and it wasn't an option. I just want to remind you guys about that, about that Kerwood-Liddell report. Thank you.
And transfer of risk is not an option, I agree. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sasha Fabry. I live at 41604 Grant Road. There are obviously very key priority topics here that are taking some precedence. That's why we're spending a lot of time here talking about the environment and the safety concerns, and the impact that this community's density will have. And I acknowledge those are very important parts of the conversation here. On the lower end, I would also like to mention some of the things that have been briefly touched on, being the affordability of housing in Squamish, especially for the younger generations, myself included. And I think, I'd like to thank Bob for some of the things that he said earlier, but I think he's now left. But, you know, if you can pass that on. Squamish's Community Foundation came out with a report this year, there are vital signs that said that Squamish currently has a 0.0% housing rate, meaning that the number of affordable or available rental housings in Squamish right now is so low that it doesn't even register. Our businesses are being affected, our community is being affected, people who are young, living in Squamish, are having to move outside of the city, people trying to find employees to stay in town. Jessamine, for example, you know, you just bought land so that you could support your staff, which is amazing, but that shouldn't have to be the case. And the fact that we have 85 proposed affordable houses below market, as well as 85 at-market, is great, and I'm very much in support of that, especially what that means for the community. And it does sound tough for me to say this, actually, but I do want to make sure that we're also having some consistency with CACs. I think that Counsel Elliot was quite right in that other developments are being approved with 10% housing, 10% affordable housing, and this is at 7. And so I am happy to see 85 of both of the other affordable and at-market rentals. But I am wondering, you know, is that enough? And those sound like big numbers, but I think that's a fair question, all in all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? I have one question from Counsel, Counsel Elliot? You had your hand up. If you didn't, that's okay. I'll ask for a second time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Come on up, Mama.
The three words I got is, "I support the program. I support, support the project. I support the affordable housing." I think I heard the young man talk earlier about it, and I support that. And I support my two sons, what they had to say. You know, they said what is in my heart, too. And, you know, I was involved for so long, and I see we're still on the same page. So I hope we move on. Seems like money is more important. I hear money. And I find life is more important. We've lost land just below, just at the mouth of the Chekamis River. We've lost land. So I just want to share that with you and tell you I support. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was Gwen, Harry. You can just call her Mama. I'll ask for a first time, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? I'll ask for a second time, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? And I'll ask for a third and final time, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? There being no further speakers, I now declare the public hearing closed. And just remind everyone that council is not permitted to receive any further submissions or hear either a proponent or opponent to an application once the public hearing has been concluded, and any and all communication should be channeled through staff. That being said, the public hearing and the agenda is now done, and I'm looking for a motion to terminate the meeting. Moved by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Pryor. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I want to thank everyone for their very respectful and thoughtful comments. Well done. Thank you.